I call it order this meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, December 9th. Everybody else stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we do have an agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members at this time?
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend that we move public speaks up to the beginning portion of the agenda in event our Wahlberger has to leave for a previously scheduled function for his daughter. So that way, if there's any deletions, we can address those while I'm here.
Okay. Are there any other additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads? The agenda will stand as amended, and actually, that will start out with public speech, which essentially, if there's anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the Board of Trustees at this point in time, just state your name, your address for the fiscal officer for the record, and then you may address the board. That closes out public speech. We do not have anything under the sheriff's report. That's going to take us, those to our detectives' report. I'm going to turn now our detective, Conan.
Thank you. The monthly report for November 2014, we had 762 calls for service, 86 crashes. We're down 2% as compared to 2013. Our crashes with injury were down, we only had eight for the month of November. 112 alarms that we responded to, 141 traffic stops. I thought I was kind of, the crash with injury was down 42%, but our traffic stops were up 41%. That was kind of unique. We had 94 citations issued with 31 arrests. That was also an increase in both of those numbers. For me, I had 12 follow-up investigations with eight closed cases for the month.
Nice work, Ray. Any questions that you'd like to ask? Nice work. Thank you. As well, let the record reflect that our administrator, Ms. Campbell's not here due to a family commitment this evening. It's excused by the board. Unfinished business, transitional reinsurance.
I don't know what's going on, Mr. Flex is supposed to be handling it.
I can handle it. Is that the case?
Essentially, this is a guest list of the resolution similar to last week's meeting to authorize the payment that needs to be made under the Affordable Health Act for the transitional reinsurance.
Also move on, unfinished business number one. We've got a second, Mr. Lino, discussion. I think all of our comments are previously recorded. My feelings haven't changed.
You're correct. My feelings haven't changed either, but we hope that it's necessary.
It's correct. Roll call. Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
That's going to take us to new business, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Paul.
Yes. Every year, we have appointments for our members of zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals come up, and this year, we have had, we have a member from the Board of Zoning Appeals who has decided to retire from the board. It's my honor to have Jim McVay here in the audience tonight. I'm going to read the email that he's sent. It's Denny. It is a bit of privilege, and I have met some great people. However, I've been on earth for a little more than four, four years, and it's time to step down for younger blood. Therefore, I do not wish to be considered for another term. For some reason, and I don't know why, I have temped along my BZA activities. I have attended a total of 292 meetings, seminars, or educational sessions. Driving to and from these activities has put about 3,500 miles on my vehicle. It has been a great experience, and I wish to thank the trustees and all the township employees the best for the future. You all do a terrific job. Our moving to Plain Township 43 years ago was a very wise decision. Jim has been on the board for over 20 years. He has family members in the audience here with him tonight, as well as a couple of board members. And I would like to ask him to come up, and we have a plaque that we will have President Hawes read on his behalf, and we're also, Jim, are going to retire your name plaque for it.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, sir. There you go, your name plaque.
At least it has not a number on it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Down here.
I didn't expect all this.
After 20-some years, you earned it.
We've got a nice plaque here that says, Plain Township logo, James McVay. In recognition of your 24 years of service on the Plain Township Board of Zoning Appeals, 1991 through 2014, we've got it signed, the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Lou Gevasis, Scott Hawes, Al Lino. Plain Township Board of Zoning Appeals and the citizens of Plain Township, we truly do commend you for all of your years of service to our community.
It's been a pleasure.
It's never been, it's not an easy one, we know that.
Thank you very much.
It was a real pleasure.
Got Denny's back. Hold your plaque up there.
Hold your plaque up there.
Do we want to, guys, do we want to pause a minute? Let's take a picture.
Go ahead, family. Man of the year.
This is something else. This is my mother here.
Aww.
I'll show you my sister.
Awesome. Good. Thank you.
Well, I was thinking, township has been great to me because we moved here, two kids went through the school system, my grandchildren have gone through the school system. Jeff works for township, and she's a teacher-taff. So, we're very, very happy to be playing or living in Plain. Thank you.
I mean, Mr. McVay, I mean, out of the 292 meetings, you left out all the nice things that all the people that appeared in front of your board had to say about some of those decisions that you made. You know, the 20 years I've been a trustee, you know, we've had some controversial issues, but with the Board of Appeals and the zoning boards, it's entirely different because usually, those meetings and those hearings, there are sore feelings on both sides of the issue, and you never make everybody happy, and you guys have to make some tough decisions. And I'm very honored that you served on this board that entire time, at least that I've been here for my tenure. You've done a fantastic job for us and the community.
Just, you're first class. You're, I've known you, and we were very happy and fortunate that we had you on our zoning. You've made some great decisions, and you went, you know, it's not easy being in front of a group and having to make that decision, and I think you're a first-class human being, and we were very lucky that we had you, and our residents were very lucky that we had you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Nice fall, Ray, you let it be those presenting, so. Under new business number two.
It's a resolution to authorize payment of the Worswood Brothers landscaping for November 2014 for composting.
Also move, discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the pending warrants in the amount of $130,327.63. So move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the payment of the regular payroll in not to exceed $240,000. So move, third, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment for the following medical claims provided by Al Care. Second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number four is the financial report for the end of December, or through the end of December, not from November, I'm sorry. Fiscal Officer number five, there's been a request for a transfer of ownership for a liquor permit. This is up there at the barrel room. I know Linda has contacted the sheriff. They haven't had any issues out there to the barrel room, so they don't have any concerns with regard to this. This is just whether or not we want to post objection to the transfer of that. There have been no issues. Okay, send that. First full inspection. Fiscal Officer number six, it's a request for a resolution to establish your new lighting district based upon the request that we got back on November 25th at Pendrove Avenue Northeast with the proper signatures and everything being presented. This would be to set the hearing for Tuesday, January 13th at 6:15, and allow the fiscal office to send notices out to all those residents that are affected by it. So move, discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number seven is a request for a resolution by the board. This resolution essentially is to amend the section 125 of the Premium Only Plan. This is another thing that came about with the Affordable Health Care Act. It's in case, in case an employee goes down from full-time to part-time status, or decides to elect not to receive our health insurance benefits, and they opt to go out into the market and receive benefits there, this will allow them to withdraw out of that section 125 plan that we pass every year. So sort of an amendment that needs to be made to that agreement to allow them to do that. So move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number eight is a request for a resolution by the board for the following transfers. So move, second, discussion, roll call. It was Mr. Hawes in the second, correct? Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number nine is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the payment for the members of the Township Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commissions for the period of July 1st through December 31st of 2014, $50 per meeting for a total of $1,300. So move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number seven is a request for a resolution by the board. This resolution essentially is to amend the section 125 of the Premium Only Plan. This is another thing that came about with the Affordable Health Care Act. It's in case, in case an employee goes down from full-time to part-time status, or decides to elect not to receive our health insurance benefits, and they opt to go out into the market and receive benefits there, this will allow them to withdraw out of that section 125 plan that we pass every year. So sort of an amendment that needs to be made to that agreement to allow them to do that. So move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number eight is a request for a resolution by the board for the following transfers. So move, second, discussion, roll call. It was Mr. Hawes in the second, correct? Mr. Gevasis? Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number nine is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment for the members of the Township Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commissions for the period of July 1st through December 31st of 2014, $50 per meeting for a total of $1,300. So move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number 10 is a request for a resolution by the board authorizing the fiscal officer to close out the fire industry fund with a balance of $51,833.49, certify that to the auditor, and appropriate those funds back into the fire building fund account 21A, which is 10A06 under the new system. So moved. Second, Mr. Lino, discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number 11 is just a notification, just to set the record commission meeting for this year for December 23rd, 2014 at 5:40. So, Scott and myself. There's no resolution.
Okay.
And then fiscal officer number 12, finally, it's just a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the refund that follows for overpayments of emergency medical services requested by Ohio Building. So move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
That will conclude fiscal officer's report for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Hawes. That takes us to the fire department, and I turn it over to Chief Snyder.
Just thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the monthly report. And item number two is the authorized purchase of a game to Ventry One, a 20 GX160 van and one lentry light with a Honda engine and generator from QD CIP Fire, and not to exceed $7,000.
I will so move, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you say this to Mr. Asio, the road department?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the monthly report for November.
Just as a quick question, with that initial snow that we saw it hit with early, how was the plowing or the in- or saling work, because they were down the body, and there was, there was a split out of the additional roadway?
Yeah, we kind of structured the areas. We were short a guy last year, earlier last year, so we went back to that, and the guys have been able to handle it well. Thanksgiving, we had a couple, we were out in Elmo's Corner before that. We had to do that in full salt. We had a lot of salt. Hopefully, it stays that way even then.
Any questions? Scott?
Item number two is a resolution to authorize the posting of no parking with snow exceeds two inches on Noel Ridge Northeast and Fiddler Court. It's a request from the homeowners association.
So move, second, discuss, discussion.
They read our minutes from the last meeting discussing the little awardables off the river, and they called me, and wanted to know if we could do their allotment, which is liquor creek.
I think we have to make sure we stay persistent on this. It must have letters gone out, it's up, and then, you know, it's, I mean, I don't mean to say harsh, but it's almost, you have to just show them the lesson that we mean business, and it's for our safety, it's for their safety, and hopefully, our residents will catch on that, look, we're sorry for the inconvenience, but we have to get on those roads, we've got to plow. So, we have to stay persistent, and there's going to be some angry people getting their cars towed, but I think when the word's out, hopefully, this will give you the situation.
We're getting a lot of positive feedback from residents about it. They're glad you rode. I'm sure there's some that's not going to be.
I think everyone can tell you.
Sheriff's department does have a copy of all the dust streets and around the bits on them.
It's posted in our patrol room. So, everybody's aware of it.
We'll never, we'll never please 100% sitting up here. We're not upsetting 10 to 15% of them all the time.
We have to be safe, because when that causes to be prepared, we'll get in a car.
Yes. All right. Okay. Roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number three is a resolution to accept Gary Bozart's retirement, and it should read after 19 years of service with the township. Mr. Flex, you want?
I will make that change.
Make that change effective November 28th.
I will so move on row number three. I think we'll stick. Discussion, and it's definitely with regret, with regrets, especially given the extent of the circumstances that the board accepted, accepts it, but understanding that family's the priority here.
Been in contact with Gary a lot, and he's doing well. Family's grieving, but they're getting better, so it's probably for the best for all at this point.
He's a very hard worker.
Yeah.
He's been around the, excellent job.
Very admirable.
Been out, he was plowing, and pretty amazing how he handles that truck. And what did he do?
What did he get you out there? What did he say?
He hasn't got used to the hand little shit plonk, little plonk.
We had to trade trucks one time, I believe.
Yeah, had to trade trucks, so he's going to use the other. But no, you know, in recognition to Gary, you know, again, 19 years, it's a long time. A lot of wear and tear on a person's body, you know that more than anybody, you know, and those guys are out there, they're working their tails off, especially at this time of the year, you know, all hours of the night, and it takes a toll on a person outside of the.
Sleep when you can, when you're older, it's a lot harder.
Again, on behalf of myself, again, you know, make sure you thank them when you see them.
Roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, that's it.
And that'll conclude the road department. It's going to take us to the zoning department, and I turn that over to Mr. Paul.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one reported this evening is the monthly report for November.
On the, I don't know, General, how soon should we expect that, break ground or start?
They've received their zoning permit, they're working through their county going permit right now. Once that goes through, then we'll get the permit to demolish.
Which building is it going to be? Immediately to the west of the.
Right, the one in the west of the dog park. It's a house that sits there right now, correct?
So, just the one property?
Yes, the house that pre- already is large enough. Okay. Item number two, we have a, this is an item that issued that has come up a couple of different times. I've been in contact with Captain Slavoff of our fire department regarding the two Starfighter gas stations that we have in the township. And there are issues with the Ohio Attorney General's Office in that the Ohio Attorney General's Office has issued orders to remove or put in service the underground tanks. Obviously, that's not happened. Those orders were issued on February 25th of 2010. There wasn't attempt to put these on at a share sale, or looking at possibly selling the properties that are share sale because they're very dilapidating taxes. Unfortunately, because of the amount of dilapidation taxes and the amount of cost that it would take to abate them, there aren't any takers on that. So, the Attorney General's Office apparently has had a discussion between Captain Slavoff and I believe Ms. Campbell was involved with it regarding the possibility of the township forgiving the nuisance payments, and then also checking into whether or not some of the, the rest of the county agencies would forgive or give the remainder of the liquid taxes. With the concept that possibly, with those being forgiven, it might make it a little more attractive for someone to purchase the properties. The two that we have in, in the township, the one on Route 62 is a viable site, it is properly zoned, it's about an acre and a half property, and it's a legitimate site. The other one we have on Market Avenue is not a viable site anymore. It lost its non-performing use several years back. It currently sits in a R1 residential district. So that site, to be quite frank, is going to be a little harder nut to crack as far as what goes on. And if we wanted to bring this up, so we could possibly continue some discussion, getting back with Captain Slavoff, and we're going to go to the Attorney General's Office. The total nuisance fees between the two parcels is $17,282.
$17,000?
Yes, $282. Those are our moles and boardups and that type of thing.
What's the total?
Total dilapidation taxes is $46,350.
On top of those fees? Or is that?
That's, that's total.
So that includes, so we're approximately a little greater than a third?
Third of.
Than a third?
Correct.
And what is the figures are for abatement?
Yeah.
To mitigate the issues of, if we have to take the tanks out, tanks alone would probably
cost $50,000 to $75,000 per site. And then we don't know if there has been any release of gas, because these are rolled steel tanks. We don't know if, if we can take the tanks out. If there is a release underneath that, we would have to go in and then mitigate contaminated I just received this afternoon information about a loan fund, an interest-bearing loan fund, that would at least possibly pay for assessments. There is also, Regional Planning Commission also has, is in the process of receiving funding for phase one and phase two site assessments. And we have put both of these locations on their list of possible sites to look at. Once again, basically, a phase one assessment, people pretty much thought, says, yep, there's an old gas station there, and there could be problems. Phase one is pretty simple. The phase two site assessment is when they actually get in and get involved with the actual testing, the soil samples, that type of thing, and that's what really then sets the tone for how much an actual mitigation would cost. So we're trying to look into those, and been working with Regional Planning Commission, at least seeing if we can find, get funding for the site assessments. Because, you know, as a governmental entity, we can do that, it doesn't have to be the organ. And, you know, it's not our problem, we don't have to be the organ, but we can initiate these actions. You know, there, we just wanted to kind of bring this back, back up for everybody, because there appears to be a little bit of movement. We actually had a gentleman in the office between the fire department and my office at the end of last week, who has a deed on the property, but the deed's never been recorded because he didn't want to record it because of the unpaid taxes. So, he claims the ownership, but he doesn't own. One of those things. He says, you know, basically, he says, if, if you give, if he's willing, out of the kindness of his heart, he's willing to donate the Market Avenue property to the township.
Sure. $50,000 to $75,000.
Yeah. In return, then, and then, you know, you get, because with round field assessments, the money goes to governmental political subdivisions. We then enforce and do that.
But once we undertake any mitigation effort, we come in responsible.
Well, sure, I, I was the.
That's certainly a donation, I would.
Yeah. I don't believe we're going, I would, I don't believe I would recommend it.
Red.
No. No, red. Well, we'll have it in Canton Township. That one is just south of our. But I, Captain Slavoff, I wanted to bring this up, bring the attention up, because it is something we are looking into, working with the Attorney General's Office on, and trying to find possible sources of funding to at least get the assessments done, so there will be a better concept of what may or may not be offered.
Excuse me, just left the board, there's, I believe there's 15 properties in the state that the Ohio Attorney General's working with right now to try to mitigate, try to figure out what they want to do with this. Unfortunately, there's two of those properties in the township, so one in Canton Township, and.
I think there's another three in the state. There was one in Canton Township.
Anyway, so we're, you know, we're not obviously the only ones, but, so there's 15 of these in the state.
absolutely negligent in any responsibility of keeping it, in keeping it, you know.
We believe the current owner, we believe the current listed owner has left the country.
The vote?
Yeah, for all the Starfighters. It's our understanding that, that they may be out of the country.
I mean, the fact that we.
In a non-extradition.
Correct.
The fact, the fact that we've expended taxpayer, taxpayer resources to at least maintain some low modest level of.
Acceptability.
Acceptability. Well, those resources could have been used elsewhere, not only monetarily, but as well as our human resource capitals on other projects. I'm not inclined to back off, back off on this myself. Yet, I mean, if something comes, comes serious, you know, the fact that you're looking at fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a site, I mean, there's a hundred and a hundred and fifty. I mean, shoot, we're not, we're barely ten percent of.
Correct.
That total. I mean, that's just remediate, remediation. That's not even developing.
Specifically, the site on North Market has been a eyesore and a thorn in most people's sides over there for years. Personally, I would entertain, I hope the board at the time would entertain forgiving those over there in that residential area. If a buyer became available and was serious about purchasing the property and taking care of it.
We've got some next series.
The buyer wants, if someone invited, then they, then they accept responsibility for the tanks. And that, that site is, once again, its loss is not performing use long time, but it's extremely small, literally on a viable commercial site. And, you know, a local neighbors buy that and then assume the responsibility for the tanks and everything.
That's almost.
I, you know, I can't see that.
Quite a down and slim just left. As far as chance.
But, you know, we, they go, once again, I wanted, we wanted to bring this up, let you know that we're, it's one of those things that we're involved with and trying to look into and see if there's a possible way that we can try to solve the situation.
And I think collectively, you know, for the ground, but, you know, should a viable or serious.
Well, the serious.
Interacted property, then we'll revisit it at that time if it helps remove the blight as well as get it into some other productive use.
Okay, great, very good. Well, we'll just, we'll keep, keep rolling on that and, and mostly maybe something will show up one of these days.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, item number three.
Dennis, you want to just run that?
I'm more interested if you need further movement of anything with the, what was your pizza place? Just north of that?
I'm sure that's where the, the top half of it, but, I mean, this has still got on, on you.
I mean, there's not a month that goes by that I don't make three phone calls about the little light blue pizza place.
It sits down in the hall.
Sits down in the hall.
It's north of the stock.
It's just dilapidation.
It sits there, but it's a.
They still running anything on it?
No, nothing's been. It is a zone, it is a zone commercial.
What was it?
I don't know, golfed on it.
Has the building still structures now? Are we looking at?
I keep looking at it. We don't have funds to tear it down.
I think that's where, like, whenever we last pushed on it, that's why the tower, that center was removed was because of the structural part on that, but it was deemed the rest of it.
Well, that's been open now for you. When I removed the top portion, that exposed the roof.
I would have to take another look at it.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking, because there's not a month that goes by that I don't get several phone calls asking, you know, what's ever going to happen with that over there?
I mean, that's in, you know, where it's located, we, we can get something done. We should be maybe trying to market that property because it's a commercial.
Actually, the, well, conversation after me because.
Okay.
Another somebody still looking for property. All market, it wouldn't be too far off. We need parking space. Not sure if that's.
Take a look at it, see if we can figure it out. Okay. Thank you. Right, item number three. There's a motion, uh, be it hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to appoint Richard Beck to the Plain Township Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term commencing January first, two thousand and fifteen, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, Rick Beck is currently the, serving as the alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals and has expressed an interest to move up to the position that Mr. McVay is vacating. And, uh, Mr. Beck has done a fine job. He's been in order for two years. I think he's going to this one meeting. He's done that one job and I would recommend this action be taken.
I will sub move on zoning number three.
Second.
Discussion. I think just for the sake of what was consistently done, moving the alternates.
Well, done.
Developing minor league talent and finally moving up to the mid-state.
It's, it's a good process.
I was going to say, we, I think we just selected Mr. Beck.
Couple of.
But a few years ago.
Couple of years, right.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, uh.
Make sure you tell him you've got some big shoes.
He knows.
We want twenty-four years out of him.
We'll see if he can beat you. Um, item number four. Uh, once again, this is a reappointment to the zoning commission. Be it hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to reappoint Terrence Seiburger to the Plain Township Board of Zoning Commission for a five-year term commencing January one, two thousand and fifteen, and expiring December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, Mr. Seiburger has been a member of the zoning commission since nineteen ninety-five. He's an attorney with very extensive knowledge of zoning. He's the current chairperson. Um, we appreciate his service and he's expressed an interest in serving one more term. And I would also like to recommend that.
I will sub move second discussion. Roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
And then just as a, as a quick follow-up on that, uh, recommended possibly on January, our first January meeting that we have interviewed some candidates to fill the position vacated by Mr. Beck for ultimate to the board of zoning.
And these candidates, are we going to advertise?
We've, we've, we've all just been advertised and the deadline is over and we receive them. But now what I'll do is go through and we'll, we'll follow the standard process. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Falk, it's going to take the Stark Park's department to turn over to Mr. Snyder.
Gentlemen, item number one is the monthly report. Item number two, um, is a resolution to, um, pay mill and company for services provided at the graveyard seventy-seven Lacrosse Tournament on November one and two, on fourteen A, oh eight A for services not to exceed the amount of twenty-one thirty-five.
I'll sub move marks two. Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Item number three is just a verbal recap of Winterfest. It was our sixth one. We had well over, um, three thousand plus people for the first time. We had the parking lot full the whole time and, um, some general parking issues throughout the neighborhood. People just were coming and not leaving. Um, the weather didn't play to our favor this year, but it worked out as well as it could possibly have and, uh, we're wrapping up and looking to improve for next year.
If I may, once again, it was well done, first class again. It's crazy how cold now that wind blows so hard there. Every year it just seems to be so cold now.
Santa's tent took a trip back to the North Pole without Santa.
But, um, really well put together. Um, they did a great job. The lights again. Just their whole crew did a great job. It was really put together well.
I'll pass along. One of them is here tonight, so message received. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else. The law director. It's going to take us to communications.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a meeting notice for Stark County Township Association. It will be held at, uh, Sky and Pines on Thursday, December eighteenth with durs at six-thirty and dinner at seven. Sponsored by East, Dominion, East Ohio, and they will be taking nominations, so.
I'm comfortably.
For vice president.
I'm nominated.
I'm nominated Scott again.
I am comfortably removed. Um, okay. You know, one list of clout.
The second one is for clout. Um, there's a breakfast reception on Wednesday, January twenty-eighth in Columbus at eight to nine-thirty for the large townships, urban townships in Ohio.
That'll wrap up communications. We'd already, had previously moved public speech to the beginning, given.
I think I have a question.
Law director. Concerns of trustees due to other of my fellow board members.
I have one thing. I got a phone call, uh, earlier this afternoon about hunting that's taking place up near the water tower on Market Avenue. The, from the allotment behind the water tower, there's some of the wooded area along the side, runs along the backside of, uh, the property. It used to be farm. Um, there's been some gunshots. Run residents said that they walked back there, confronted the people. They had a, a, a blind, a shanty set up back there in the woods. And, um, they're shooting them. It's pretty close to some people's homes over there. So, I told them I would bring it up tonight and turn it over to you.
Did we make a call earlier?
Somebody called about hunting.
Are they allowed, I'm trying to, if it's, if it's a lot of, how many acres, how many acres do you need to hunt on a property that's surrounded by?
How many acres?
In other words, if the area is surrounded by all these.
Backstops. It's not about hunting, it's the shooting.
The shooting.
Yeah, yeah. So, if they're not, if they're, you know, the residential area, you're pretty sure you need backstop at the very, very.
Well, both directions, you're going to shoot across the field towards the houses on the other side of Schneidler. The other direction's towards the houses at the top of the hillside.
Right, yeah, there's no good area.
So, yeah, I mean, several of the people over there were concerned and wanted I would bring it up to you, to the director.
And they have a blind set up?
There's a blind set up there in the woods. Say confronted, um, four young adults, probably in their early twenties.
Is there anything else?
I.
Okay.
Mr. Lina, you got anything?
I'm just going to let the record reflect. I've got, I've got two items. I know Detective Conner, I'm curvy to the first one, but I told the individual that stated on record bot, botting, botting area off Star Cliff, concern to speeding. Let the record reflect that there was an individual, his spouse, that actually performed their own traffic study because of access to equipment that the township was providing. With those reports, we provided back our own reports and, you know, just for the sake of what the board has consistently done in the past, the resident asked about putting stop signs in to control speed. We've already reviewed previously through Ohio Revise Co. and so forth that stop signs are not a speed control mechanic, mechanism.
No.
The second was speed bumps. I had explained in a phone conversation as well as in an email correspondence. I know Mr. Anticino, I believe, or administrator, Mr. Campbell, I believe you were copied on, that speed bumps are not feasible due to, one, how we have to keep roads, especially in the winter, but then the cost to provide those and then the precedence that, that it sets. The residents over there off of Star Cliff, you know, seem to think that we need to have an additional speed study done over there, but twenty, correctly if I'm wrong, but twenty-five is the lowest that, that speed can be set, so.
And, uh, I just provided Detective Conner that the five base speed of the, uh, grid out in the upper speed is twenty-two, one thirty-one miles per hour. You're always going to have car speed.
Yeah. And I've explained it. I've, I've offered them, like we've done at Pulp and Firestone, either designate specific driveways or possibly sit, we'll kick it all day long to anybody who's, who's violating it. I just want it to be a matter of record, even though we've dealt with it here, because the individual was asking for a course of action and essentially it's going to be the regular continued patrols there. Um, that's the only thing on that matter. The other's more so a comment. You know, we, we do a number of charitable, uh, or we support a number of charitable members out, out here in Towne, Towne Chapel Hall. And the turnout this year for the USO initiative, it has been overwhelming. So, I thank everybody in the community who has contributed something to that because literally I've, I've used this as a collection point along with two other locations and we're probably going to have a truck and a trailer full of just material that's going to go to military families that have, you know, shortfalls and they can go into this family support room and get additional stuff to help them with their ba, with their basic needs. So, thanks to the folks out in the township community that did donate to that. Anything else? Concerns of the fiscal officer? Okay. It's going to take us.
Mr. Lina, did you have this?
Okay. It's going to take us to the approval of minutes for November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, which also move.
One second.
Second, Mr. Lina.
Discussion. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
And I will move that we adjourn at six forty-six P M. in this regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
This is what you.